I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, in the previous...
Second.
Motion said. Any additions or corrections to the... Seeing none, all on table, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All same time. She cares. Bills.
Bring them up when we go into here.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to the second. Further discussion of questions on the bills.
Just one question that Candy had from the audit for the city and the audit. And they never came up here.
And that's just a progressive payment? So it will be under budget? If the fish should be done in the next day or two?
Yeah.
Because I think they usually charge us like sixteen thousand dollars.
How much?
Sixteen thousand.
That was the travel expense this year.
Long day.
Okay, further discussion on the bills. See, you know, we'll call this.
Brett?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Judges' checks.
Second.
Motion said. Further discussion. Seeing none, all on table, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All same time. She cares. Prove our agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda, all on table, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All same time. Okay, Sarah's up first. Good morning.
Good morning. So I just wanted to give a little updates about what's been going on with Ramsey County extension. And we actually had a pretty busy summer. You know, things are a little bit different than what we would have done before, but we had our state communication arts contest. It would usually be right around fair time and at the fair, but this year it was virtually on Zoom. And we had four participants in Ramsey County competing in the state competition, which is awesome. And we had one place first, one place second, one place third, and one place fourth in their respective categories. So we had a really good showing there. We finished up our Ramsey County mini 4H camps. We had a DIY camp and then a really fun silver bud camp. And the best part about that was when the kids got to make slime. So great fun was had there. Did you get one? Yes. And then we are so glad that we were able to have our achievement days. There were some companies that did not even have an achievement days. So we ended up having about four hundred, almost five hundred exhibits, which is a little over half of what we would have had normally. We had our livestock show a little bit different. Me, Bill, and another egg agent, the judge, visited ten farms overall, two days in July. And it was a lot of fun, he said. And our pet show, we still have a pet show. We had six different pets there on July nineteenth. Our static exhibits, we had over two hundred exhibits and almost a hundred older buds, which is our beginner exhibits. So a really good showing for our static exhibits. Usually the kids are judged face to face, but instead we just had the kids drop everything off. They were judged the next day. And then everybody picked up their exhibits the next day after that. So we have every, all the pictures and everything on our Facebook page. And we had a lot of videos, live videos that day, so the kids were able to see their results that day. Our horse show, unfortunately, every time we have a horse show, it gets rained out, so we are still needing to finish that up. We've got about halfway through. We're going to finish the horse show up on July thirteenth, so that will wrap up our achievement days. We still have three gardens going with our junior master gardening grants. We've been donating a lot of pro's to the summer meal program. That will finish up this week. And then after that, we'll just plan to donate to the Hope Center. And we are actually finishing up some junior master gardening classes. We're glad we've still been able to complete those. We have twelve participants in the class, and they've been learning all sorts of things, from composting to terrariums to plant propagation to some good things there. So they'll get to take some pro's home. Things are just going crazy out there, so keep your doors locked. The zucchinis going crazy, so we don't want any zucchini. Let's see. We're planning a 4H recognition and a family sun night out at the park. Anytime that we have a gathering, we do have some paperwork that we have to have approved by NDSU, so that paperwork has already been approved. We're planning on having just small groups of twenty-five throughout the park and have little games and lots of hand sanitizer, social distancing. But we still want to have something to recognize our 4Hers for the year that they've gone through. And then one last thing, our state shotgun match is still going on for 4H. That happens this weekend in Bismarck. We have, we'll have nine Ramsey County participants in that, and they've been practicing all summer, so we should have a good showing for that. And they'll be competing in traps, heat, and sporting plays. And just to let know Cindy Olson from our office, they specifically called her from the state. She is running that competition. She's amazing. So kudos to her for doing that, and it should run very smoothly. So, in the nutshell, that's extension. We've been busy, which has been good.
I've been hearing great things, so congratulations on your adaptability to the difficult circumstances.
Yeah, we definitely had to adapt.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Roger, good morning. Morning. Just now we were talking yesterday, and incidentally, Chris did most of the late work on this, about getting a new generator. A couple weeks ago, that Friday, when it was so hot, our current generator ran into an issue that managed to overheat itself. And I came up in the afternoon and just shut the air conditioning off, building to heat up from. I think that would, of course, let the major power draw. Anyway. So we got some estimates for a three hundred KW generator that would run the whole building. And actually, it may also run, I'm sure it would run the heat at least over in the memorial building too. Memorial building on a separate transformer than the courthouse. So power issues that day at the courthouse, but memorial building, car break was not affected. And way back in ninety-nine, we ran a line from the generator over to the basement of the memorial building, no boiler room, just in case. In two thousand, it had any sort of power issues. So it's already a line, electrical line, running over there, so hooking that up might not be, hooking up heat might not be too difficult, you know, from the generator to heat to the memorial building. Anyway, got a price quote of sixty-two thousand here for the generator, but that does not include installation. And unfortunately, the Tim Olson, the guy from Fargo who sent this back, who just got it this morning, is on vacation starting today. So we could not get a estimate on what installation might be.
He said we have to look at that as well, if you had to open up the windows of louvers. The louvers on the building, they don't think are adequate for a current generator. Might be part of the reason why it overheated. So the big C nine cap would need bigger, larger louvers for airflow, so he said that'd be tough with a hand job.
Where is it located?
Right, right out here on the south side of Charis House.
It's that little brick building.
That little brick building, it's in that building?
Yeah.
And our current energy rule?
Uh, mine only just put in an eighty-three.
Is there an hour meter on it?
Yeah, there is. I just looked at it the other day, two hundred and fifty-three, something like that. I mean, no, it hasn't run many hours, but...
That's more than I thought.
Oh, it's thirty-seven years old also.
So it's been used some?
Yeah.
So this is the load that Roger?
Well, this is the only thing we got. This is just an estimate to try and have some place to start at.
You don't have this in your budget?
No, I talked to Candy yesterday to see if we could put this into, not capital outlay, but building improvement, whatever we call it. No, just another. And I had talked to Candy about eighty thousand yesterday, and we should try go with that lease that include installation if we decide to go this route.
And those figures you were giving me yesterday on the phone, how big a machine this is and how much we need?
Those figures again, do you have them with you? Kilowatt wise, you mean?
Yeah.
Chris had talked to the Otter Tail, and they said our maximum draw at, in two thousand eighteen, was a hundred and ninety-four kilowatt. And Tim Olson, the salesman representative here from Butler, thought two fifty KW would be adequate to handle that. But I was thinking that if we wanted to try and power the memorial building also, we could try to pick up that base three, three, three hundred.
That one ninety-four, that's just the courthouse, that's nothing to build for the memorial.
Right. But the memorial building wouldn't take a whole lot of power, you know, just the rocks there.
Yeah.
Depends on what's going on.
Yeah. Depends on the event, depends on the time of the year. Like we said, in the winter, for the summertime, it doesn't take a whole lot for the winter.
And even in the winter, I mean, you know, other than the heat or air conditioning, whichever, and lights, and I mean, that just isn't nothing, I'm sure, compared to the courthouse.
So the one we have now, is it totally shot?
Well, no, I'm not saying that. It just, it overheated the other day, about Friday, and I started it up again Monday and then started up just fine and round, but I think it just, it was starting to stop, it was a lunch that one day that it just panicked overheat, so.
It's probably something that we could sell at the surplus sale, option on.
There's not many people looking for those.
Somebody might need a giant generator.
But anyway, this is just a thought, if we, you know, we've talked in years past about getting a new generator, so we actually had troubles with this one. Maybe it was a time really concerning.
Yeah, and well, it's probably going to be one of the only companies that we can actually deal with, just because they're in the area and they do the service and you don't want to...
Right, and we did say, they said they would service it for many years to come. They would. Yep. They have representatives in Grand Forest.
Yeah, they're very good with servicing.
They have people in Grand Forest that do just this.
Yeah, we, the county housing authority on the main building has one, and they come down once a year and do a maintenance.
They do.
Yeah, it's not, obviously, it's expensive, but it's usually not horrible. They're really good holding the shutty.
And how old are they that?
I think probably nineties, but I'm not totally certain.
Of course, we still need to get another estimate to do the mols that we're dealing with here.
Yeah.
And Chris, did Joe say last week when we were talking with him about Chris, if there was grants that he thought?
If there was something available, we could strive for the requirements and grants.
Who told you that?
Joe Lees, the regional director.
But we haven't looked into that yet.
Apparently, there's nothing available right now.
Nothing?
Not right now, no. It would be next year that we have to start working, like grant processes or depots or equipment, it's not a lot wise.
But there are grants that exist for this, it's just that they're tapped already?
Yeah, they're allocated.
I think people are already, already got lines.
Yeah.
I thought this was for next year too.
Right.
Okay, additional questions?
Something like this, you definitely want to build in the budget, so.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
Or at least have somebody come up and look at our current situation and determine, you know, if the generators were salvaging, if replacement is what we need to do, or maybe modifications to the facility so that, you know, like you said, airflow and things like that. So maybe having the guy from Butler come up and say, "Look at it, give us an idea of where this stuff's at," would be a good place to start. It's good to have at least the ballpark going, cost of lease, we can build it in, so if it's something we're going to have to replace, we can do it next year.
Do you know how big the current generator is as far as kilowatts?
One hundred.
One hundred?
Yeah.
See, it's only designed to do the basement here for the emergency operations center. And then a while back, we put in second floor because of some of the medications that health department was having, and the need for refrigeration on that. So it doesn't do the entire building.
That was never designed to.
And it was never designed to.
Yeah, we added in the second floor twenty years ago.
I suppose it was about that.
Well, that one hundred kilowatts in nineteen eighty-three was a lot, and now we've got computers plugged in everywhere, and we, none of that was wrong to have to draw energy. We just, and that's kind of the thing that Candy told me that Friday afternoon and said, "We don't have power, the generator won't kick in, what do we do?" I mean, when stuff shuts down, you can't operate anymore.
He didn't want to go outside for a picnic either.
And some of the automated features that this one would have, that the old one would...
Well, I doubt it, they've gathered a lot of upgrades.
Well, I think there would definitely be an upgrade, there's no doubt about it. Like you said, it would be an extensible building.
Who else do we look for to get a bid on?
Well, the Cunnings would be the next one. They're the two big generators around the area anyway.
Then there is the Generac two, whether or not they...
Oh, yeah, Generac.
I don't know where they're located, but that is another generator.
We should make sure we have enough in the budget for it, and then advertise the bids. I think that could be, they're all competitive.
We're not going to be us. We're kind of doing this, moving backwards, we need to know if we even have money to start with. I realize the need bids to figure out how much money we need. I don't know how soon we have to have a lot of money in before the end of this year.
First meeting in September, we have to have our preliminary budget ready.
Okay.
And finally, first meeting in October, so we can't go up after September. But I think we can put in a ballpark figure and...
See if we can come up with something, I've never heard.
What now?
We can put in a ballpark figure and have it in our budget, probably the majority of it anyway.
Okay, additional thoughts, questions? Okay, seeing none, I guess.
All right.
Thank you, Chris. John, welcome.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
And you love pictures of guys to just look at. I'm not here to ask for money, but...
I'm liking you more already.
Good, yes.
Yeah, I'll let you guys know what's going on, but I've got to make you guys brave a little bit, that's why I'm here. Our old building, if you need it, we got a new building a couple years ago, we're in that now. And what we're looking for is a place to train, not just for EMS, but for fire and for police department. So we kind of, sorry, so we kind of got together and decided we want to get together and all train in one spot at the same time. Currently, we train in kitchens. We are fortunate that I'm a service that we have a small room that we use for board of directors. It's enough to get half my staff in at a time, not twice a, and when we train our EMTs, we're having approval. So my board of directors would like to do is to see feasibility of us doing a whole building. We looked at the whole building, it's periodized, we haven't had any bids on it, so they're seeing if it's going to be beneficial to the community, if they donate it to the community. But their biggest concern is liability. So they don't want to be liable for any accidents happen there, same with the fire department, city, nobody wants that ability. So we're thinking about, and we've talked to a lawyer, that we're going to try to get our own I-1C3 just for the training facility. That way, it's not owned by county, city, and it's one big huge group of people that has its own board. What I'm coming to you guys for is to see, we can, we've been doing grants for all the building and everything, and we're trying to see what we have available, and we're doing our work ourselves. That's not what I'm here for, it's the ongoing expense, it's the maintenance. Because this will be a I-1C3 and once the training is good, we're going to outside communities, be it in Dakota, Spirit Lake Nation. And breaking up, my board would not like to pay since we're building a whole building, and so monthly it comes out two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a month. So my only question for you is to get your thoughts, is it something that we can actually go forward and bring to the public for a small money, just to pay for our overhead?
What was in monthly as much, John?
Very first page, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah. So basically, if your utilities and everything involved, maintenance upkeeps, we're able to, you know, be booked every year, something like that.
Yeah.
Many entities that are utilizing it?
Yeah, and for a lot of us, guys, I really am looking to take, you know, grants work, to try to, you know, hold them for. It's just nice to have a little back, county entity for something that we can go for, but this is my question, it's for the someone who, I guess, is a small market.
Would be a big benefit to the ambulance?
To ambulance, fire, and to the city, right, to all of these departments. Because we teach, I teach my EMS courses, these, these type of areas, fire is going to be holding, like their regional fire bosses here, at least of our, we do. We're putting a lot of programs in there, a lot of training things, there'll be a lot of places where police departments will train, they've got them on a couple of seminars. So it's not just Devil's Lake, it's a lot of counties that we need to, it's all over, which is, it's not just ambulance. Concerned rest of as well, if you want, sorry, if they want.
And the figure you use is two fifty-eight a month?
Well, this divided up, it's a two hundred and fifty-eight for city, county, and the ambulance, but the board of directors is holding, we don't have to pay for ourselves.
Okay. But two hundred and fifty-eight a month?
A front pay, a second back pay, which is very long.
How much?
Yeah, I think that's out of three entities, each entity is going to be fifty, roughly.
And you're hoping that it can just be two entities?
Yes, hopefully, we can get a lot of grants and get some grants, but it's hard to get some of us, it's a whole.
Yeah, additional questions?
Excuse me again.
Yeah, to spend some money.
Yeah, to me, for five dollars, or, you know, even if we split, for us in the city, for five thousand dollars a year, we get a training facility and we help out the local rural ambulances and, you know, we get benefit for the sheriff's department and do all this, the LPD. It seems like that's a pretty reasonable use of dollars, I think. If we were going to fund something to that nature, would it have to be general fund dollars, or could we put it, you know, something like sensitive training dollars, could we put it under the sheriff's department budget, or?
You're pretty solid on each figure?
That's what it's cost us for local, we made a little loan in Panhope, this is where we run full capacity, so much we're spending.
Seems like an operator for the county, I think.
Yeah, that's sensible to me. Well, and it's one of those things, if, you know, we could go up with hat in hand and try to get all the small fight, rural fire and all this and stuff, and it's like, it's all coming from the same place to a point, why not just adding up some dollars and help everybody out, make sure to get good training? It just seems like an operator.
You can definitely call on us, we're being in here, appreciate it. Look at Germany.
Yeah, we still have this one.
Yeah, I mean, if it's anywhere in this ballpark, I don't think it's a question.
Thank you for all your work.
Ask for the reasons, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
David, David. Morning. All right, project update, so I travel projects, one on eight, a lot used a lot, they're done now. So, got a little rain on there the other day, they'll pack it all in, so it's a pretty good place for it. But I'd be, that's up there south of Hammond, we're going to start late this week, summer's due around. And that's County Line, coast, that one, we're going to start towards the middle or end of this month. Which one's up good for us, we've got some blade operators, Dr. Ish is up.
Any questions on the gravel projects?
Our bridge work, we should finish that up this week, it's going really good, they, as well as it's been, they've left you with a lot of stuff. Yeah, let's finish all of them this week, we'll be able to take our rented units back, the original rental for another week, so we can schedule that. Any questions about bridges? A truck road, I think we're a chance to drive up there this morning, but they, they told me they were going to fix all those rust spots yesterday, they were going to haul some gravel in there. We've all scared fire again, so we've left them what's there, and then they're still going to use it a little bit as a hauler, so they're going to wait to put the base one back in later in fall. But for now, they want to get enough gravel in there so it's smooth for all the harvest ground. So that's the plan, I'm not sure if they got other there for yesterday or...
We're not hauling out yet, yeah.
Right now, we're not hauling, he said they are going to haul some more out of there.
They are?
Yeah. It's really hard again, even the sauce pots are gone, but there's still... All right, any questions on that? Okay, I got prices for trips next year, I'll... Our dog construction gets a quarter, it's seventeen twenty-five a ton. Strategy is a quarter, eighteen fifty a ton. That's prices delivered two Devil's Lake. And then you two thousand ton. It's a low cost using gallons of low bid, they'll cost fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And like a motion to go ahead in my notes.
Who can approve, or move to accept a low bid, I should say? Okay. Motion to do a second. We have a second, through the discussion. See you then, all people, please say aye.
Aye.
And also, I mentioned I was going to get prices for hauls and gravel for our stockpile on Devil's Lake. Just because we're not going to have time to do it ourselves. Silver quartered us eleven twenty-five yard, and ghost quartered us nine seventy-five yard. The difference is the mileage, closest pit was not much closer in the miles. And I plan to get about seven hundred and fifty yards. So depending on how much room we ought to get in the yard, that'll cost seven thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Who can approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve.
It's a little bit for closer gravel, through the discussion.
See you then, all people, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's in second?
Also, we've got a couple of, we got a bill for a downed air payload, repair bill. It was five thousand one hundred ninety, ninety-three. There was some extra mileage on there for waiting out, a good seawall along with it. And then some, well, a little gallon of oil, so that's quite. The bill is a little bit higher than what the whole, what the estimates for repair. So I'd like to motion to pay that bill for five thousand one hundred ninety dollars and ninety-three cents.
Move to approve. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion to second to pay the repair bill on payload, through the discussion.
Britt?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Lightfoot?
Hi.
Now, Friday, we got a bill from DOT. We're out there paving, I'm friends kind of doing the help strike. This is for estimate one and two, it's not the final bill yet, but it's a big share of it. And this bill was for four hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. And just a heads up, there's going to be a little bit more following these bills, that's not the final, still. Give us those numbers again, count. Four hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. We had that at night most, not quite, but I'm sure we borrowed it ahead on our pedal dollars, but all came for that.
Okay. Okay, motion to pay the bill. So. The motion is second to pay DOT, pay bill on I-2 and I-2, through the discussion, please.
Olson?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Britt?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Lightfoot?
Hi.
Motion to approve.
Last day ago, the bill for the gravel from tomorrow, over on April East of Austin. That was three thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-two cents, which was a little bit less than we asked.
I have a motion to pay the bill. Second. Motion to second to pay the ground, we're at twenty-eight. Just one question, did they pull that gravel out of Fordville then, or is that where they come out?
Um, I don't know if it's Fordville, but it's that area. Doesn't sound like Adams, maybe.
Yeah, it's kind of east of, and that, see that avenue, it's kind of over there. Pretty good gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It screamed, it wasn't crushed, but, you know, we're trying to pick soft spots a little bit, probably it's going to work for that.
Yeah, I was a little hungry with the heck of it again, with it coming across, like, we said a good rainbow, help drive that in, but I had to get it from the road.
Okay. Further discussion? See you then, all people.
Brown?
Hi.
Wakefield?
Hi.
Britt?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Lightfoot?
Hi.
Motion to approve. Okay, go. Thank you. Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, unfinished business, we're going to make a discussion. Um, I guess I don't have a whole lot to add, we had a discussion on this the last meeting for a little bit. Uh, but two different topics, both the testing and then the, you know, what are the parameters going to be for, if we want to go back to buy a pump and only? I thought we had the first question, had answered, but not now. The law enforcement center was going to allow us to piggyback on their testing, piggyback, I should say, on their testing. When we had a problem, a question in else or something like that, then that doesn't sound like that's going to work anymore. So we might have to go back to the drawing board on that a little bit. But the standard testing protocol is, it's pretty straightforward, so if protocol says we need a test, we get a test, and otherwise, we just have to kind of go there again. In regards to the, the protocol for, if we wanted to go back to buy a pump and only. I don't have anything specific put together yet, I have been scouring the internet, trying to find good information as to how to make that decision or when to make that decision. I've looked at the governor's, the smart restart guidelines. Obviously, everybody knows they've got, you know, like a meter thing. About your risk assessment, where we're at, we're still technically green. Which if you look at protocol or the standards to where we're supposed to be on green, it's kind of baffling to a point where we're still in the green. But, so I don't know how much that's going to be useful in making the decision on the process. I understand, because it's a subjective thing, there's no objective measure on the why that makes a difference on the restart type of thing. So it's, it's a lot of science and a little bit of art, unfortunately. So I don't really have a good rationale for when we should make a decision that way, other than to say, I think we'll just kind of, I mean, it's, it's not, there's just no situation where it's we can look at positive tests, we can look at all those kind of things and see where we're at. Uh, the one thing I would like to do at some point here in the future is, is work with Steve and, and uh, maybe send out, you know, the most important thing is health and safety of our employees. And the people that are coming in and filling, maybe send out a survey and see how our employees, like a web link survey, and see how our employees feel about how things are going, how if, you know, safety of the building, how they feel protecting their health, things like that. So at least we have a little bit of feel where the staff is at. And that would maybe help inform our decisions, if we had to go back to, uh, buy it for the only. I know some, Jeff shared, he was recent, he was yesterday.
Yep.
Uh, Ward County went back to, uh, court, is not going to have jury trials, I think?
I think all trials were suspended till the end of August, twenty-third of August.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
So they had an employee that had to pause that.
Yeah.
And Haven County shut their courthouse down again, asked they to report them only, again.
Who shut it down?
Haven.
Haven is back to a fundamental, I, I think there's kind of a, and some counties have never kind of went off the point. Some of that is, some of the counties have different circumstance, obviously, like we talked about, about screening capabilities, that's going and stuff that we don't have. Um, but it's kind of a mismatch, some counties do it in some ways, some counties do it in other ways. So there's no real clear guidance as to what route to take, other than to where we feel comfortable, I guess. You know, what, what our level of comfort is on what we're doing now versus what would, you know, preclude us from continuing to do what we're doing, so. Yeah, input feedback from the staff as well as the commission is obviously always welcome, if you have a concern or a question, just yell at me. I'm still, I'm still trying to kind of wrap my head around how, how to make that decision more. You know, because, I mean, technically, we're running, in Ramsey County, not too bad right now, but we have counties around us, obviously, that are having some pretty high positive rates. Obviously, um, you know, and, and just because we have a fairly decent positive rate now, doesn't mean it's not going to be really bad next week if it blows up or something. So we don't know exactly how it's going to function yet. That's kind of where I'm at, I'm still, but, so basically, what I'm saying is, I don't know if there's going to be a specific protocol in place. It's going to be more, when things start to ramp up, if they do ramp up, coming in, that's my concern, is coming into school, coming into flu season, coming into fall. We're not going to have a clue when somebody's sick. If it's COVID, if it's flu, if it's comical, coming into this September, October, take the better time. So it's going to be really difficult for the staff to discern, and again, it comes back to the policy of, if you're feeling ill, but pretty straightforward. But then it comes down to, okay, how much of the public is going to heed that advice as well? And how much are we going to be comfortable with general public coming into building during those seasons, like generally ramp up and, you know? I think we're okay for now, is essentially what I'm getting at, but it's, it's something we're going to have to keep a real close eye on and, and kind of take a decision, or continue to talk about it. Thoughts, comments on that one?
No, I think it'll be credible that we're flexible.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no real way of knowing how or when this thing will rear its head and, and I, I have faith and confidence that while you may not have a protocol to follow, that you'll, you'll, you'll know it when you see it, in terms of needing big action.
I don't like subjective protocol. I like objective, we make this, 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 this is what we do. And it's We all do. Yeah, I mean, that's just how I like to operate, so you'll, you'll know it when you see it type of thing always gives me a little, but I, I we, we really do lack objective protocol when it comes to, at least anything I've been able to find up to this point, specific to our code and other. Might be other states that maybe have better objective protocol, and I haven't found it yet. But we're following, like, we have our standards now, we're following all the CDC guidelines, what we're supposed to for offices. Uh, we're doing what we're supposed to do from a cleaning standpoint. I think, and I think that's why a survey of staff will be useful, because if the staff doesn't feel comfortable in the building, that tells us something. And, and if they feel comfortable, then at least we have an idea of where we're going. Uh, but it, it'd be good to get an idea of that, so I'm hoping to get something like that put together in the next week or two, so we can get that out. You know, there's rooms to do it, survey monkey, we'll find a way to get it up and down, and get some information back from them to see how things have been going, concerns, thoughts, comments. And staff, I keep on top of this, we will.
Yeah, surveys really seem to do it, takes five minutes to set up on one of those sites.
So we'll, we'll put something together, we'll, we'll get some input, just so we have some feedback, and then, and then we'll, we'll, next two weeks, we'll kind of keep going and going, unless something crazy happens, and we'll, we'll, we'll keep it.
And one thing, can, we have the disaster, or the COVID declaration. I know that's covered by the president, but we should probably send it our local one.
Yeah, so we can continue to tap dollars on the emergency fund if we need to. I think that's reasonable, COVID thing can, with that motion. Second. We have a motion in second to extend the disaster declaration for COVID nineteen. So against the counters, in order to establish a way for official means of life.
Chris, do we need to make that, uh, retroactive from the time we went on the first shutdown, or? I don't even know if we could do that.
We actually had one in place.
Had one in place?
Yeah, we, we declared, declared a disaster in, uh, that meeting, second meeting in March, so it would have been April, May, June. Yeah, so, most of those were about ninety days, probably, so we're out past that. We probably have had a lot of expense.
Right. Where are we with the, um, all the supplies that we're looking at? Sanitizers, dispensers?
Still on backward, I, my four, or my three cases of sanitizer wipes, I got three little bottles. That was the only thing that came in, they canceled that order, they said, we're not even going to attempt it again. The dispensers are still backward, I can't believe it. But the white salt wipes was four months, it's good. Still on the fingers crossed.
Can you, heard the question, I guess, motion?
Oh. Can we, can we extend that beyond ninety days? Can we just extend it to the end of the year?
I don't know. Where are, I guess, I'm, uh, I skipped a loss. We're remembering to do it another ninety days.
There you go.
Well, I think it's ninety days, don't quote me on that, I think it is, I'm not totally certain, so. Well, for now, we'll extend it, we'll, we'll get a question, then, or we'll get the question answered, I think. Okay, further discussion? See you then, all people, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's in second? Motion, Chris. The only other thing I will add, not to the point, but if you guys have been getting, I should say, if everyone has been getting email, looking at it, apparently, it's in the pipe that the, and I, I don't ever get my terminology right, but the emergency committee at the state approved yesterday or last week, paying for all post-certified costs when it comes to law enforcement out of the CARES Act dollars. So all of our wages, benefits, and insurance costs are going to be covered from the beginning of the declaration in the state, so like, March something, in March first until until July, all of our sheriff's department costs will be covered. So we're going to get a check to pay us back for all of those costs. For everything? For everything. All wage, all salary, insurance, and, and benefits, overtime benefits, anything that goes with that. They approved fifty-four point two million dollars or something for the state. So we're going to get a check back for that, I don't know what kind of money that's going to be for us yet, they're still have to have it approved through the budget section in next week or something like that. Because the, the emergency section has to, then the budget section has to approve dollars, I don't know, but it's looking like it's going to happen because the governor's back in, everybody seems like, so. At some point, we're going to get some dollars back through CARES Act to pay for a lot of those costs. So, again, I don't know what that's going to come out to, I'm sure between Candy, Steve, they're going to have to, I don't know, figure it out. And then, huh?
It'll be.
It'll be. But then, then we have to submit it once it's approved. But they're talking that it's going to pay from then until, all the way till now, it's just they're going to do it in a couple of different payments, back payment, and then going forward, and then we'll submit every so many months, and we'll do it apparently to a point, and all the declarations still out there, so. That'll leave some money back in the bank, that'll be useful, so maybe we can pay for a generator or something. So, just so everyone's on the same page there. Okay. Very good.
Still doing the same with mask requirements for employees, do you want to extend that to the general public coming in at all, do you want to just?
I have been, I have been hearing from employees when they have meetings going on in meeting rooms, that people are sitting really tight, close together without masks. So I don't know if that's something you want to look at, that when they have a meeting, they have a mask at home.
Or just a reminder to, you know, keep social distancing, if you're not going to have your mask on, make sure that we keep people safe. And still try to keep those meetings to, you know, ten or less, and as best we can, try to hold it that way. From the standpoint of asking the public to put masks on, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but the problem I do have with it is that how, the minute you put a mandate on like that for the building, then if somebody's not going to do it, how are you going to enforce it? And how are you going to make sure people coming to the door, actually, who, what you're asking them? We don't have anybody at the door. You know, counties like Grand Forks Cast, they've been mandating it, but they have people at the door twenty-four seven, make sure people come in and listen, and say, well, if you're not going to listen to what's been being asked, you're not going to be allowed in the building. Uh, and we just don't have that capability currently. Unless we decide to Unless we decide to, uh, put somebody at the door at that or won't run into a problem or somebody will say, I won't, I, I, I prefer not to wear a mask. And then we'll have to get into the question of who are we going to have enforce that guideline? I think that we, that might be just difficult. That's all I'm saying. Probably more harm than good.
What's the third floor doing here? They're doing anything to bring people in and out of it?
It's a good question. Uh, we, we had some, some questions about it initially. Uh, they were not following the guidance, uh, very, very readily. After discussing it with them, uh, some back and forth, they said they would try better to follow the guidance. I don't know where they're at right now on it. Uh, I haven't been at the building very often because I'm trying my best to stay out of here too. But you know, people that don't need to be in the building, don't need to be in the building. Uh, they don't try to keep everybody safe. But I, I haven't heard, I've heard the additional concern, you know, that sometimes it's being a little lax. But you know, that being said, last time I've been in the building, so everybody in the hall is having a mask on. So it's just, I think it's just to have a grace with everybody and just reminding people, hey, we're just going to protect each other, say, as best we can. All we can do. I don't, I don't know how to solve the problem if we, if we, I mean, to me, if, if we think it's, if, if, if it gets to the point where we decide we want everyone to wear a mask, then I think we're almost to the point where we have to say, we can't necessarily control that very well. And we need to go back to by appointment only. And then if they say it's by appointment, then we require them to wear masks when they come in, because they can't come in unless somebody lets them in.
Well, you're seeing a lot of businesses even here in town that are now requiring face masks. You know, Walmart, I saw holiday was, it's not, it's not like it's unprecedented.
No. And like I said, I, I'm not opposed to the concept. My only concern is, is what happens when you get those individuals that, that won't agree with it? Then all of a sudden you have an enforcement issue and then, you know, how do you deal with it? Do you have this discussion?
Ask them to leave, right? Or, or, I mean, we could, we could provide masks too, but.
Well, we have been doing that, but.
But if, I mean, some, some people are just going to be, those people. I guess there's probably a nice way to do it, which is to say, you know, is, is your business something that we can handle on the phone?
Yeah.
In which case, you know, if you go ahead and leave and we'll take care of it, you know, call you, you call us, point it to.
I know we have several people stop in our office asking, you know, is a mask required? And we were like, it's highly recommended.
Yeah.
And they just turn around and walk away.
Well, I mean, that'd be something that you could ask for the staff too, if you feel more comfortable with a mask required or is it recommended for the, you know?
I think with the number situation, I think that would be a bad idea. Because we want to try to keep as many people in the building. Employees, you know, it's healthy.
Yeah.
Yeah. No matter, no matter how inconvenienced the public might be by, you know, potentially not being able to come in for a meeting without a mask, there could be inconvenience more if the auditor or the treasurer or somebody gets coronavirus and is out for, you know, multiple weeks. So.
Well, that, that's my concern as well, is that we have several offices within the building that are, you know, really essential to the operation of county government. And with only a couple of employees within each apartment, if one comes down with it and the other one has to be quarantined because they have close contact with that and another employee, is that office then closed and how is that essential function continuing?
Well, especially, especially with the election coming on. I mean, God forbid some of these important people catch it and are out. But that needs to be handled.
I, I mean, again, yeah, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. My only concern is then, you know, what do you do if somebody is not? You know, are you just going to let it slide? Because if you're going to let it slide, then at that point, then people realize that I don't have to do it because they're not going to do anything other than ask me to leave. And it's a public building, so we can ask them to leave because it is our purpose to do it at the same time. You know, very enforceable, very reasonable.
I guess the only way to do that then effectively would be to lock the building down again and do it by a plan on.
That, that would be, that would be my problem. Because all the offices would continue to stay open. You would be, people would only be allowed in for certain things and then you would mask, put a mask on.
Is it, is it possible though, that even if you can't necessarily perfectly enforce it, that you will get a higher rate of mask usage in the courthouse? If, if were a requirement to the public and therefore wouldn't that be a beneficial half step to take? You know, and, and if, and if we're still seeing significant problems, then I think you could go all the way to maybe close down it. Crystal, you had something to say, sorry?
Oh, no, I was just going to update you that we have had to quarantine for employees who didn't close contact and it was close contact outside of the courthouse. But, and then also we have had a few scares with the public health being in the building. And just so, and public health would probably have a little bit more control of that if we did go to that by point only. Just, I don't know, there was a miscommunication with the people coming in and public health didn't know they were coming in. So.
Will I make a motion that we start requiring the public to wear masks on premises? And we'll see, you know, to what degree that, that addresses the problem. But at least for now, and if, if we need to address it with more stringent measures, we can do so.
Yeah.
Is there a way we can do a temporary sign on that sidewalk group before they actually get to the building? And say mask required? You know, and then it's their choice to, to come in or go back to their vehicle and get their mask or, or go to their vehicle and make a phone call or, you know?
I'd like to make one comment. I mean, I think we should slow it down a little bit here. There's other public institutions that are out of very difficult mind that would make a decision. I talked about the public schools on how to handle the situation of COVID in schools. I don't think we need this facility locked down any more than what we have right now. Our numbers are not inflating by any means. And that was according to the governor's figures yesterday. Let's not put any more undue pressure on the school board on a decision that they're going to have to make whether they open up our schools, which I hope they do. Because distance learning does not work in my eyes. There's too many kids that are getting left behind. So let's not take action here that just puts other public entities in a position where they have to provide what another one is doing. Let's, let's give the public school system this month to see how things go for them. I think things are going along fine here in the courthouse. Yes, we don't want somebody in one of the crucial offices to get COVID. Nobody wants it. But let's continue doing what we're doing. Keeping our distance, washing our hands, wearing masks when we're broken. I just really think we should try to go along with that for now. And not make a hasty decision here that's going to put other public identities in a position where they're going to have to react to what we're doing here in the courthouse. And I will vote no in favor of that motion that had been made. So I just think we need to give the school board to roll. But it's going to be a very difficult decision to make. And every school board in our court is having a hard time with it. You can see the TV clips, you can see what's in the papers. It's not going to be an easy decision. Distance learning does not work. Too many kids are getting left behind, way behind. So let's let them do their job. Let's just relax. I think things are going quite well at the courthouse, uh, I see.
I don't necessarily disagree with you and we, we don't want to put undue pressure on anybody, but I, I look at it from the opposite direction.
Okay.
I don't think distance learning is the best option. But if we take the lead and man- and mandate mask usage, we're giving them cover to say, the kids who wear masks as well as the staff, we can get back to school. Because that's one of the things that is going, that is one of the things that is going to be necessary. I think, I, I know everybody hates it and I don't disagree.
I think you're right.
But, but mask usage is going to have to be one of those things that's going to have to be done in school, whether it's a hybrid type of thing or whatever. And I think maybe by taking the lead, we're giving them some cover and saying, hey, you don't have to be the first one to stick your neck out. And, and I understand it's, it's, it's not one of, I mean, this, this whole thing is.
Well, I agree with you. I respect.
And I'm like, I'm glad I'm not in the school.
It's harder to do.
But yeah, I, I don't know. It's a struggle regardless.
Some way we got to get those kids back in school.
No, I agree. I agree. Dan, I don't know how long the distance learning is going to happen. No, I don't know how it's going to work yet at this point. If that's going to be what the option is going to be, we'll all, we'll make do with it.
They will have a vaccine before law.
Hopefully, that's the hope.
Yeah. And my, my whole thought process on it is if we can help slow things down a bit and see those, those active numbers of cases with, that we, that we currently got go backwards. And less than that, maybe we can, you know, uh, within two weeks or a month, and school of us, we have better numbers within our county and, and we feel better about sending our kids and our, our teachers and our staff back into those buildings if we've done our part controlling it for the wrong reason. Or slowing the pace anyway. You know, I, I think there'd be a temporary deal at best. And, you know, nobody wants to worry these things off on the basis. If we can slow things down until either they find a cure or it goes away on its own or runs its course, uh, I'm not sure what the, the best option is. But just trying to keep people safe and keep those numbers going the opposite direction instead of having seventeen active cases within Ramsey County like we currently have. And we were shutting things down in March when we have no cases actively in coming.
We learned a lot of things from March.
We have learned a lot of things.
What, you want a sign on the sidewalk? Let's put a sign up that says, you know, to the person that's locking up the sidewalk. Is there any way you can do your business from a phone? We would be much more receptive to that. Are these are, again, you can answer the question. Is there a lot of people coming in and wanting something at the auditor's house? So you can get this over the phone? I get, I don't know. But that's, you know, some way to go away.
It's just, it's, it's just the.
Use the phone first, you know?
The five minute question that, oh, hey, I was driving by.
Looking for somebody to talk to?
Yeah.
How you want to, I don't know. Something like that would probably help outside the courthouse, I would think.
Set some hybrid version of what we're doing. I think you're right. You've got to get, got to get school backed up on distance learning does not work. And I, I think it's not just where the education company is at, but the overall mental health of the students and the health condition, um, everything that goes along that the schools provide to the students has been affected since, since March.
I'll let, I'll lighten it up a little bit. I learned of two individuals, males, in the last few days. And they have, I don't know all the kids are, I'd take it they're like ten or twelve or fifteen or whatever. And they were both boys, single adult boys. And I would probably be just like them. And both these individuals said that distance learning did nothing for my kid. I mean, nothing. And they are totally against it. So I think it works like Adam says, for some, for some, it just, they got to be in the classroom.
No.
And they were upset. These two parents were upset. I said, I kind of looked at them and I said, well, maybe we were all like that. Maybe distance learning wasn't going to work for us either.
I, I, I think, I mean, not that we have a motion to take it, but I think, I think the one thing, if there's a silver lining for this whole thing, you can take from it is, is, is we don't take things for granted that we have. And that, that the education of our kids and stuff is so vital. And that, and, and the schools provide so much. And we, we just kind of think, we're not going to go to school. When we start talking, well, they can't maybe go to school, it, it totally changes the mindset of, you know, just. So thank the teacher, that's what I'm saying. Thank the institution.
Teachers got their hands full, no doubt.
Okay. Anyway, there's a motion on the table, the mandate for mask usage in the courthouse. Further discussion?
I would just like to make a comment. My, my question is how are you going to enforce this? Walmart's not enforcing it. Holiday's not enforcing it. But if they said holiday out, they go holiday every day. You're just kind of setting yourself up for more hassles, if that's the right word? I don't know how you're going to.
I don't, I don't see what's lost though. You know, I mean, yes, you're right, unless you're literally going to throw someone out of the courthouse.
And it's going to come to that. There's going to be adamant people that are going to say, no way.
Sure. And there, but there are, there are those types of people that interact with everyone all the time.
That's true. That's true.
I, I don't, I mean, I think, let me, let me give you an anecdotal example. I, I went in the subway and one of the employees asked me, said, you know, for, for our safety, would you please wear a mask when you come in again? And I felt ashamed because I knew better. You know, I knew better. I should've, I should've worn a mask. And I, and I, I was embarrassed and I was frustrated. At first I thought I was frustrated at him for having the gall to say that when I'm a customer. And then I realized that it was really just that I was frustrated with myself. Uh, and every time I've gone in there since then, I've worn a mask. And so I think that, you know, if, if you're changing the, the game by saying you have a mask requirement that some people might not follow and you're going from thirty-three percent compliance to sixty-six percent compliance, well, you've done a pretty damn good job and you still didn't have to shut the courthouse down. You know, so I don't know, I don't know that anything is lost.
Good night.
Further discussion, further comments? That's James. Okay. Here we go. Uh, I'm calling the vote. I'll call, please.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Olson?
No.
Lightborn?
Aye.
Motion here. Okay. Just if we have anything else on unfinished business before we move on. Okay. On to new business. Approved twenty twenty-one preliminary budget and set budget hearing for October sixth at eight thirty AM. And we have preliminary budget sheets in front of us.
This does not include the watchers.
It does, it does not include the, the generator fund, no?
Yeah, I think the motion on the table is, uh, there was information on our table to start with. Pardon me?
Yeah, we can't make a motion to table because we have to approve today.
We can approve in September. It's a lawsuit.
No, laws change, it's no, it is.
Estimated tax statements have to be up by August third first.
I do agree that there are things that are changing though.
Okay, excuse me, I guess you're going to remind me of, remember that. But the political information, I guess, we have on the front of us here today. Masked, I haven't read it all. Pierce County is very upset with the legislature helping it. I'm surprised to meet and see him pull out, he threatened it before.
Well, I guess speaking as, as the county's district health board member, I've had conversations with my colleague on, on the district health board, from Pierce County. He was of the opinion that their county commission was more or less unanimously against some of the portions of the budget pertaining to salary increases. And after hearing that and, and having my own opinions on the matter, I ended up having a conversation with Mike Stephan, who is the chairperson of district health board, and, and sort of asked him what, what he felt should be done, you know, as, as a result of, of this. And he said that he hoped that we could get a special session with me to come up with a more palatable budget. And, and I believe in my conversation with my colleague from Pierce County that, that that would be, you know, acceptable to them. It's certainly better than trying to ad hoc create a new budget and make a combined board meeting on speakerphone for counties, so...
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna have to be, I mean, if it's something where, where we're gonna have concerns from the other counties, it's gonna have to be, something's gonna have to be hashed out in another meeting before. I mean, and we have time before that final meeting in October, we have to approve it.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll go that way. Because even, even Mike Stephan said that he felt there'd be a few Benson County commissioners and that would be opposed to it. And if a few, say, our commissioners were opposed to it, then, then you're not gonna pass it.
Yeah. Yeah, the main concern is if you don't pass it on that conference call, then, then we'll be done.
We need to, you have to make a budget, basically from scratch, trying to get everybody to agree at that meeting. So, you know, I'll, I'll continue to push that we work on it so that we don't sort of have a, a lot of upheaval at, at, at that meeting.
Well, and it's, and it's the same situation, we're approving, we're approving the high and moving backwards. So, I mean, there's, there's time to still readjust to anybody down the road.
Lucas, was there Pierce County commissioners at your last district health meeting? And they approved this?
Well, the, the health board approved it, yes. But there were concerns levied by myself and the, and the Pierce County commissioner. And, and we, he spoke briefly, he and I, after the meeting about it. And he sort of intoned to me that, that he felt at that time that his fellow commissioners on the Pierce County Commission would be pretty staunchly opposed to its passage. You know, since then, you've got this paper in front of you, you can see what it says. But it was clear to me also that, that they likely would not be in support of it.
Yeah, by reading your articles, you know, it seemed like they're gonna be in support of this.
I don't think so.
Like I said, I wouldn't be surprised to see him pull out.
Well, I think, I think if we can find a, a workable solution of which I think that there is, you know, reason, there are reasonable alternatives, I, I don't foresee that being a problem. Now, if the other three counties were gonna die on a hill for this, then maybe that would be a possibility. But I don't foresee that being the case.
Okay. Further discussion on the preliminary budget?
And as you stated before, Chairman, that it's, I'm gonna approve it on the high and you can vote down, but you can't go off on this point.
And I just want, my, my main concern always is that we have our preliminary budget in decent enough condition so that we don't have to send out a bunch of additional, whatever they're called, I never remember the technical term, the taxation things that's getting sent out this time of year. We only have to send them all to a certain amount of people. So if we get the, get the, the budget in pretty good shape, we don't incur as much cost sending out more than we have to and things of that nature. And I think we're in pretty good shape this year simply because we had our, our, our health insurance costs come back already, which is good. And that was the big concern last year, we had no clue where the health insurance costs were gonna go yet, so we had to put additional dollars in the budget and, and, and back down from there. You know, overall, I think, you know, if you look at it, I mean, even if you put some money in for a, for a generator, we're still not in too bad shape. Especially if you can look at, you know, and again, that's the highs, we can always move backwards. So if we can find our way back down and probably even hold even, get back down to that eighty-seven, forty-eight if we, like, maybe turn a little bit here and there. It's at least in the ballpark.
What, what's up, how is the mill level up?
Right now? The way we're set up, the mill level would drop from ninety-three sixty-nine for the county to ninety-point-eight-one. But because of the taxable valuation increase, we actually are increasing taxes by about three-point-eight-one percent, just because of the taxable valuation increase. Uh, 'cause we jumped from fifty-nine three-oh-three for a mill to sixty-three eight-one. Or excuse me, sixty-three five-one. So...
Plus there was less than the roll.
She's surprised.
Pardon me?
Our numbers went high for the roll.
So we're looking at sixty-three mil, correct?
Ninety, ninety-point-eight-one. Then a hold even would be eighty-seven point forty-eight. What, what's the number where we set our location to that? Any, anybody above a ten percent increase, probably. And that's gonna be certain properties in this situation. But, you know, if you get your prelim budget ten percent higher, then almost everybody in the county's getting low. So it just saves money and, and it just makes more sense to try to have your budget in good shape. I think we're in pretty good shape overall, just a matter of, like I said, we can, you know, we're within three-point-four mills, two-hundred-and-forty gram at it now. So we can probably find that, you can push the hold even if it really drops. So, I think it's a pretty good shape to get first, but, uh, more pretty options.
I make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-one preliminary budget and set the budget hearing for October sixth.
Okay, we have a motion, please say. Further discussion? On the motion to approve the budget, the budget hearing for October sixth, we are first meeting in October at eight-thirty a.m.
Um, it's gonna be nine, 'cause this is...
It's gonna be nine a.m.? Oh, because our district health board's at eight-thirty?
Yeah.
No. Nine o'clock's okay, maybe?
We can do it after.
So hopefully you get this straight, no, otherwise, nine o'clock might be...
Yeah, we've only got thirty minutes, we're better than our budget, straighten it out before...
All right, we're calling at nine o'clock, then. Okay, further discussion on the...
Are you thinking you can hammer this out for thirty minutes?
Well, I think, I think district health will have a special meeting hammered up for that. So...
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna hopefully adjust a bunch of...
Forward.
Okay. Any further discussion or comments? Good luck. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Olson, say. Motion carries. Approval, cancel, checks?
Say.
The motion is set. One or two, just one. Pretty good. Okay, further discussion on the motion? None, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Olson, say. Who carries? Visitors and delegations, anybody got anything to type in? Nobody's on the computer? No, like, put up the card back there, tell us if anybody's on the computer. So I don't come talking to somebody out in the center space. Okay, we passed, doesn't it? Okay. Uh, portfolios. Commissioner Ruth, what's up with you?
I'm gonna have a walk, um, see if we have a good report from extension. Uh, talked with Carrie yesterday, things are, um, progressing in her office. And they're not being allowed to wear masks in, in courts. Hopefully, and I think, uh, a lot of her and her staff have been tested with... No results yet, so we're not gonna look at no use in trying, so...
Okay.
Uh, things are pretty quiet also. Sheriff's Department started a new deputy yesterday. Everything's pretty good, LEC numbers are still hanging way up there, upper eighties, lower nineties. So everything's going good over there, I believe. Other than that, it's pretty status quo.
Okay. Commissioner Rose?
Yep, law enforcement's fine and the social service, I didn't make the last meeting, but I can kind of hammer it all with, with that process, we got it backed out.
Yep.
Something like that.
Okay. Commissioner Wakefield?
We've already talked about mine. My update, so, no, I can expect, except for, except for...
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything to say, I think, I think, um... Yeah. We haven't really had any meetings since our first, our last meeting for outside reporting. So I don't really have anything to add other than... Yeah, that's it.
Oh, uh, everybody probably missed this. Home rule, uh, the, the charter committee voted to approve bringing the draft as written twenty eighteen before a public hearing on August thirteenth at seven p.m. in the memorial. So... The discussion was, was good and it seemed like everybody that was on the committee before and the new member, um... I mean, everybody seemed to think that, that it was a worthwhile document and, um, and before with that, seeing what comes in the public hearing and then have it up there on the road and whether or not it goes before, whether or not, you know, it will go before us either way, or whether it comes to us with a recommendation to put on the ballot or not.
Okay. I'm gonna vote that as an announcement. Anything else for announcements?
Anybody got a question on the October election?
I don't have a lot of answers. It's like a virtual, so...
Yep, it's a virtual.
Okay, I don't have to worry about going to this part of the person, so... Yeah, get out on the corner now.
Really kind of a hot spot right now. Not too much, but...
Yeah, you know, that's the thing, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit cool. Okay, anything else? See nothing, we are...